I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, January 8th, 2019, and this is Prescott City Council's study session. So please call, roll.
Mayor Mangarelli.
President.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilwoman Blair.
Yes.
Councilwoman Good.
Here.
Councilwoman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Schuell.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. A big crowd today. Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks for being here today. A couple announcements before we get into the agenda. One, we have a group of 25 students here from North Point Middle School. This is a civics class. Hi, guys. Thanks for being here. And they are accompanied by Ms. Haynes and Ms. Gregory. So thank you, thank you all for being here today. Secondly, on the agenda, we have three items. And item B has been pulled, and I wanted to make sure everyone knew that if you were here for that item. We had something happen internally that we needed to pull that, a mistake was made, and we need to back up, and that will be showing up in a future meeting. So that has been pulled for today. So with that said, we'll move on to item 3A.
Update on the Hilton Garden Inn project.
Guess I'm kicking this off. You gonna put me on this timer?
Sure. Mayor and council, good afternoon. Happy New Year to everybody. Happy New Year to everybody in the audience. Let me lead off by saying, everybody involved in this project is very excited to finally be able to bring it forward in its totality to the public. As all of you know, there's a lot of moving parts. This really is your classic P3. In this case, it's like a P4 or a P5, for better or worse. But I really believe that this project is gonna rejuvenate and revitalize the Sheldon, Monizuma, and Granite Street corridor. You're gonna hear that from a lot of people that have put a lot of time and energy into this project. The main parties for the public at large that have been very involved are the city of Prescott, the Shumways, WBI Companies, is their company, Prescott College, and APS, excuse me. And then secondary partners that are benefiting from this are the Farmers Market, the Granite Creek Corridor Revitalization Committee and the work they're doing, and really the Prescott Downtown Partnership. But none of this could have been happening without the Shumways' significant financial contribution. This really is a domino effect on a bunch of local community organizations, positive domino effect, by having private investment on public land. So before I turn this over to the Shumways, for them to go into some of the detail about the project and kind of show you some, what I think is pretty cool, 3D imagery of what's gonna be placed on this property, maybe I can allay some of the concerns that have been voiced the last go-round. I know when we were only able to present an element of this project, there were several people who spoke out against this, and we've actually done a lot of outreach that we would have done anyway, but because of the timeline in terms of the Shumways and the Hilton Company, we had to present a portion of a project when, in a perfect world, you could have done the whole thing at the same time. Parking for Restoration Church. Accommodations have been made to address the parking for Restoration Church. John Wilfinger, lead pastor, is now 100% supportive of the project. In fact, I have a really brief email from him, if you would give me the ability to go ahead and read it. "As a second-generation Prescottonian and pastor in downtown Prescott, I am enthusiastic about the Hilton Garden Inn project. I am excited to see responsible and needed development in the downtown area, specifically in the Granite Creek Corridor. Overall, this project seems to be a great fit for the area, for the city, and for tourism in Prescott." So I think that checks that box. Homeless Meal Site. An alternative site for the distribution of homeless meals that's coordinated and conducted by Daniel Mattson has been found. He and Joe Baines have gone out and looked at this site. It works for Daniel, and in fact, it might be a better site. So I think you can check that box as well. Existing Park Impact. There's a lot of discussion about how much this was gonna impact the park as it is today. Joe Baines is gonna talk a little bit more about this. It's basically gonna impact a couple of trees that were actually approaching the end of their life cycle. So luckily, what needs to be removed is probably not gonna be much of an issue, and they will be replaced. Also, we had concerns expressed about the obelisk, if I'm saying that correctly. I think I am. The obelisk will stay where it is, and additional and augmented landscaping will be provided in and around the obelisk, so there will be no impact there as well. Excuse me while I look at the other things that I have. Hotel Height. There was some discussion very early on that we might consider giving the Shumways a discretion to go to 70 feet. The Shumways don't need 70 feet. This project will be brought in at 55 feet or lower, which is administratively approved or allowable in the zoning category. Public Offering and Notice and Prosperous Transparency. Public notice. I was just talking to council. We have noticed this project five times, John. Is that correct? Which is well beyond what's necessary in terms of Arizona law. Other than the Shumways, we have had absolutely no other interest shown in this project by anyone, or the site by anyone or anything. Also, in terms of process transparency, I think rational, reasonable people will see that when you have as many parties involved in this as we've had, and that there are deal points that impact others that are beyond the city's control, us having a dialogue about this in its totality in front of God and country would have killed this. So in a perfect world, 100% transparency's a wonderful goal. In the real world, it's not always practical. And last but not least, land value. We had an internal analysis done by somebody with a lot of background in real estate, and that's what we based the lease purchase price on. Since then, we've had additional information provided to us by the Shumways and APS about the value of the land in and around this area, and lo and behold, the valuations hold up really well. And I think Stephen and Shane Shumway can talk a little bit more about that, as can, if you're so inclined, John Flicker with Prescott College. Frankly, this is really a tremendous opportunity. I think it, I've been calling this now Midtown. I don't know if that's appropriate or not. It feels a little bit like Midtown. I think this is a wonderful project for this community, and when this is explained in the next few minutes, I will hope that this community realizes what a gift this really is gonna be, and what an opportunity we have. With that, I'm gonna turn things over to Stephen and Shane Shumway, if you guys are ready.
Hello, Mayor, and Mayor Protem and council members. We're glad to be back. Happy New Year to you. Hope you had great holidays. Shane and I have listened and wanted to respond to some of the comments that were received last time. Maybe I could start with just a general comment that would help broaden the understanding of where we are as a company and what kind of a corporation we hope we are. We taunted, yeah, we've been taunted. We've touted our willingness and desire to be a partnership in every community that we've worked in. Most developers will come in and give that kind of lip service, but then when it comes down to the actual project, what comes is just what benefits them. We hope today what we're presenting is gonna show that we really have a desire to be a partnership with Prescott and with other valuable partners who have come to the table, including APS with McKenzie, Prescott College. President Flicker has not only been a great partner with us, but become a good friend for us as well. And so relationships is really what we're here to build and want to build. And in that, we have made changes that should show this partnership with the city, of which Michael Lamar just mentioned most of those. Height, which was a big deal. That was maybe a major comment that we got last time, uncomfortable with 70 feet. At the 50 to 55 feet that we will be at, we'll actually be lower than the height standing from the street of the National Bank Building right across the street from us, so it won't be standing out in that way. The park, we've moved the hotel now further to the south, outside of the park where it was in the park much more. We've been able to move it to the south. Parking was an issue. We've actually partnered with another private owner of parcel here so that we could provide parking that will be used by the city and the community for the park that's gonna be developed. We're participating more financially in the park. And then I think the other thing we'd wanna just address to understand well is this valuation question, of which not only do we feel like the price that we're paying is a fair value based on market, but the reality is, is that doesn't represent the total contribution of the Shumways. We are making contributions in other ways, including financially to the park, including financially to this property next to us, which will be used by the city and the community, which is at our cost. We also are, you know, there will be considerations like the conference facility, which will bring business revenue for years to come, bed tax and sales tax, as well as other revenues just from what's being generated from the increased project. So we just wanted to share that we really are showing what we want it to be, which is a good partner. With that, we're just gonna show you a little bit of those partnerships that have come together and really the pieces of it.
These are the 3D renderings that we've been able to prepare since last meeting. We are still in a design development phase, so we tried to get this as close as we could, but still recognizing that we are still in a design process. Just to orient everyone, if I can get this to work properly. This is Monizuma, and this would be Sheldon coming in right here. Obviously, the hotel, the existing historic railroad bridge here, and Sam Hill Warehouse here. The intent would be to have this all feel as if it's one larger project. It flows well. You can easily walk between the different elements of the project, including between the parking to the north side, the park here, which, the intent of this is to show potential for event space here, such as Farmers Markets or other types of events. Community gardens here. This shows the new APS station here, just to the north of the Sam Hill Building. And then on this side, as currently planned, to add some elements here in the park area, such as a play area. And then this would flow nicely into other parts of the park and to the backside of the hotel. Just to show some different views of this, this is a view, so if you were standing at the Sam Hill Building looking towards the hotel, here's a historic bridge, a nice pool amenity here to the side. This, the bridge will be connected to the hotel by another bridge, which is in the Here's just another view of that connecting bridge between the hotel and the historic railroad bridge, and how it links over to the Sam Hill Warehouse. Another view, the intent of this view is just to show kind of how we're trying to incorporate all these different elements together. Hopefully, they really feel like it's walkable and, you know, trying to eliminate any sort of barriers in this back area, so it just feels like a nice park area. Here's potentially what some of the park area could look like. Just a kind of a train-themed play area to be consistent with some of the history of this area. A nice seating area shaded. And then that hopefully flows nicely, like I said previously, into other parts of the park and the hotel.
I have a question, Shane.
Sure.
Of course, for you guys, I'm sure it's important, but it's also important for the city. What type of lighting do you visualize for those walkways and pathways? Are they gonna be low-lit lights? Are they gonna be light standards? How do you foresee that?
So the design, maybe I can let Joe speak to that if I can, but the design of the park is ultimately at the discretion of the city, and so, Joe, would you mind answering?
Councilwoman Blair, I would say that would be details that we'll get into later. Typically, we operate our parks as a dusted-on type of park, so I'm assuming we would have some pretty low voltage lighting in there that would just be enough for safety, but not for an active park after hours.
Thank you.
Then we just have one more view here, which just gives a different perspective of the area.
You'll see a building, the parking lot that's on the south side and really the west, that's just to the south of the pool right there, there is one building that's left there, where our intent, again, one of the questions was related to homeless, or even affordable housing, or what we, you know, anything we can do from that end. Our intent is to leave a row of those apartments, and we'll provide those as part of the project, too. We'll upgrade those as part of the project and then provide them as well. You get a good idea of connecting the granite corridor and how easy that's gonna be off that parking lot right now, too. That's one other partnership that we haven't talked a whole lot about in this group, but which is gonna be a key part, and that's how we really connect the downtown and this granite corridor, too, to the hotel. You get a good visual right there of how easy and how walkable that becomes. Michael, anything else? Any other questions or anything?
Any other questions, comments from the council?
Yeah. Do you have a frontal view coming in from Sheldon?
Not in these 3D renderings, I'm sorry.
Okay. Other questions, comments for the Shumways?
I think, Mayor, if I could just make and respond to that, you guys are building this in a floodway. So there have been other things that you've had to do with your design, because it is in a floodway. So could you just speak to that? I think it puts other difficulties in building, and I think that you have accomplished that.
There's really two categories of building in floodway or floodplain. We've previously built projects in floodplains, of which the requirements are pretty stringent. Take those and magnify it by about 10, and you're in a floodway.
Yeah.
And so we found that it creates challenges that, one, we haven't run into with a project before, but which we've done, we have now become comfortable with, that we can build in that. The foundation will be considerably more expensive than it ever would be, so that we don't inhibit the flow of water.
Right.
Coming through there, which is the requirement, which then allows us to build a residential type of unit in this area, too, which can't be in a floodway without certain parameters being met. And so all of those have become costly. We've gone through the engineering of it at this point. We know we can do it, but again, it will be at a considerable cost.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Thank you, guys.
I would like to make one. Here's one member. I wanna thank you for being willing to invest in the city of Prescott. You know, I've been here for 47 years. Prescott is my hometown. I'm glad to see people are still willing to come to Prescott and put their money into my city. Thank you very much.
Well, I think, good point, Councilman Lamerson. And on that note, I appreciate your willingness to work with all these partners, and, you know, it takes a lot of coordination, a lot of communication, and some give and take in some cases. But to see this come to life, you know, I wasn't sure it was gonna happen, quite honestly, when I first heard about it, because there's so many different, you know, organizations involved. But I think it speaks highly to our community about all the different organizations you mentioned earlier, working together. So it's good to see that. It's very refreshing. I appreciate you guys doing that, being willing to work with everybody, build those relationships to see this come to fruition. So thank you.
Maybe one comment to that that we'd give, that Mr. Lamar made comment of really what we've brought to the table. This is our 11th hotel. We've done other projects besides hospitality, but by far, the relationship we've had with the city, with staff, with anybody we've been connected with, elected officials, has been an exceptional relationship with Prescott, one that's been unique to us. We wanna be here. For that reason, we love being here, and we appreciate that you've welcomed us, too, to your community.
Quick question, 'cause we always talk about backgrounds, my background happens to be, with parks. And when you start talking about parks, and Joe will know this, I say it all the time, comes a maintenance level. And crossing those thresholds of being on city property, private property, whatever that looks like in the end, are we gonna have an intergovernmental agreement with whomever is going to maintain the outside structure? Because that's the first key that people are gonna see coming down Sheldon Street and Monizuma, is how well that thing's taken care of. And I wanna make sure that agreement is solid.
Councilman Blair, I'm sure Stephen and Shane will have something to say to this, too. We want this to feel as if it's one concept, but there'll be clear lines of demarcation about who's responsible for what. And I think that's what you're asking, basically.
And the DA starts to address that, which will now be in greater detail as we go forward.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Who's up?
Joe, did you wanna have a few words? And also, John Flicker, I think, wanted to speak a little bit.
As City Manager Lamar said at the beginning, this is really a great example of a public-private partnership, but I think in addition to that, all of the other partners that we brought into this, such as Prescott College, Arizona Public Service, the Farmers Market, all this working together gives us the ability to do some park development that, without the public-private partnership, we wouldn't have endeavored to do. So really, I think at the end of the day, we walk out of this thing, yes, we do have some other maintenance responsibilities that'll carry on, but we certainly have some offset in economic development that will certainly take care of that. But this is an opportunity that comes about only because we have the opportunity for a public-private partnership. As City Manager Lamar spoke to earlier, I had met with Daniel Mattson about, you know, currently we have a Feed the Homeless program that goes on in that parking lot where roughly the hotel will be. We've come up with an alternative spot that has the access that would be required to bring in the tables and chairs and the food and whatnot, and that's off of Madison Avenue in a part of the park that's pretty underutilized as it is. So on the map here, you can see Madison Avenue, and you can see here where Monizuma is. So just down below the bridge, there's a nice flat spot down there. I had Daniel down there yesterday. We've looked at it a couple times. It's a great opportunity in there. It can provide some parking, some level of parking, enough that's sufficient for that organization to keep that on, and I think improve it. I think a better spot, and I think more improved. A couple of the other things that I'm excited about is the tie-in to the Greenways Trail. As you all know, we've, you know, taken upon the task of doing a master plan for the Greenways Trail system, which I think is a really important part of our future moving forward, in that, you know, having pedestrian access to businesses downtown, to educational facilities such as Prescott College. We have in this plan, although it doesn't show right here, a connection under Miller Valley Road to what I'll call the West Campus of Prescott College that will connect their East Campus. I mean, anytime we can connect pedestrian traffic to shopping and businesses and schools and neighborhoods, we're really, you know, taking it up a notch, and I'm really excited about what the future's gonna bring with all of that improvement to the Greenways Trail. Beyond that, the Farmers Market, I think, has been looking for, and I think Kathleen's here, and she may speak a little bit later, has been looking for a downtown location for many, many years. They've got a history of success. They're a well-respected farmers market within the state, and we're glad that they're interested in being a partner in this. That space, then, that will be the Farmers Market, will also be a space that'll be sort of a community space. So we could pick up the Farmers Market on a Saturday, and Sunday we could have a community concert down there. So it'll give us some event space that'll hopefully take a little pressure off the Courthouse Plaza. You know, even though that's the county, we all recognize that there's a lot of use downtown, so this might spread some of that out. Really kind of expands our boundaries of what we know as our downtown right now. So again, just a lot of great components within this project, and I'm excited for it moving forward. So if you have any questions, I mean, I'd be happy to answer those.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Overall, I think the project will be a great addition to the city, being almost an anchor facility for the development of the Granite Creek Corridor, which I think can be a really future amenity for not only residents, but visitors, et cetera. Looking at the renderings, I see a lot of greenery. I see a lot of turf. I'm concerned about this splash pad. And looking at the contract here, it does say that "no water demand analysis is required for the project, and the project is not subject to further review and approval for a water management policy." Water use is a big concern of mine, and the city of Prescott, I think, has led the Quad Cities and the county in efficient utilization of our water portfolio and resources. So I think I'd like to see how much water is gonna be needed to put this project into effect, and whether we're really gonna be focused on low-water-use landscaping, and, you know, what does a splash pad say to visitors and residents about our city's commitment to conservation, when it looks like it's a type of amenity that can be pretty wasteful?
Well, good points, and we are water-conscious, obviously, and we consider ourselves a leader. The splash pads are popular around the Southwest, especially because they are recirculating systems that have very low water use. I can't speak to you, how many gallons a day, kind of a thing, but they are efficient. We will come up with those numbers prior to any approvals. But the other part of that, too, with the grass areas, is there are some grass areas, some turf areas we could retire in Granite Creek proper, that are really kind of irregular pieces that aren't necessarily being utilized, you know, like we would like a grass area in the Southwest to be utilized. So I think between retiring some existing turf that we have, being responsible with the recirculating system that the splash pad is, and again, the splash pad's not a real big splash pad, and it's not a 20,000 square foot, it's more like a 2,000 square foot. So really, water, as you pointed out, Councilwoman Good, is important in the Southwest. We'll certainly be very wise about how we move forward with that and make sure that we have a clear understanding of what that use is gonna be, and that it's acceptable, you know, to the elected officials as well as the public.
Thank you, Joe, and I'm glad to know, and I expected that you would be concerned about this and including it in your plans.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from Mr. Baines? Okay?
Mayor, I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, Joe, one of the things that, with our Tourism Advisory Committee, that when we did a lot of surveying, one of the things that came up on top is that we don't have a lot of amenities for families and children. And certainly, the railroad-themed park with the play area is very, I know we have Kayla's Hands, and we have some other things, but having something like this downtown, I think, would be great. And the splash pad would, because it is recirculating, does give some amenities to some children and families that would not have that otherwise. So I certainly have asked from the get-go about, what's the water usage on that? And it's on our radar, but I think it's a wonderful amenity to provide for our families, and something we need in Prescott.
Yeah, absolutely. Councilwoman Orr, that's been identified for a while there, that we need to have more family-friendly events, and I think this event space will set itself up well for those types of things. It's not huge, but it'd be nice for, you know, gatherings, for school reunions, or any number of different things. Yeah, and I might point out, too, that, you know, the funding source that we are contemplating using for our part of the infrastructure improvements would come primarily from impact fees that have been fees that have been collected. Hopefully, we've got to get a better grasp on exactly the details, you know, what the lighting looks like, and irrigation and whatnot, to kind of find out what the total cost would be, but primarily, we anticipate it coming from impact fees.
It'd be nice.
Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor, in concert with Mayor Protam. Here again, family-oriented cultural center of the region, you know, this is all consistent with the general plan, that overwhelmingly, the public of the city of Prescott is endorsed several times. All we're doing is implementing what was consistent within the general plan for keeping the downtown area and the periphery the center of the region, and that's what we're working with. What that means is it can't be for just senior citizens, it means the region, so I don't have any problem with what's being proposed here. The Ts being crossed and the Is being dotted, we're working on that. I think that's what you're saying, Joe.
That is what I'm saying, thank you.
I think seniors should be able to use the splash pad.
Sure we will.
Mayor, it'd be nice if you're comfortable having John Flicker speak a little bit about Prescott College's role in this.
Absolutely, thank you, Joe. President Flicker, thanks for being here today.
Thank you for inviting me, Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members, Michael, thank you for having me. I'm John Flicker, president of Prescott College, and I just want to speak strongly in favor of this project and the partnership that we've become a part of. I really believe, as Michael said, that this could transform this whole part of the city, and will benefit all the stakeholders involved. Prescott College is one of those stakeholders, and our role in this project is really twofold. First, we plan to sell Sam Hill property to the hotel for their use, and we plan to acquire the APS property as an addition to our campus. We acquired the Sam Hill property in the early 90s, we love that building, it is beautiful, we're going to miss it, and, you know, we raised a lot of money to restore it to its historic integrity, members of the community made contributions for it, we're very proud of that. And one of the things that makes us comfortable is the commitment the Shumways have to build on that heritage and make it much more available than we've been able to. While we love the property, it's a very isolated property for us, it's separate from our campus, it's difficult for our students to get from the west side of Grove Avenue to that property, it's surrounded with chain-link fences now, it's a small piece of property, and it has limitations for our use. On the other hand, the APS property is much more accommodating to our future. Prescott College is growing, our enrollments are growing, and we're looking at where and how we can expand in the future. The APS property has three buildings on it that we could occupy immediately, and that would function very well for us, and there's approximately five acres of other land there that would allow us to expand in the future. And a critical part of this is connecting our campus on the west side of Grove Avenue with our new campus on the east side of Grove Avenue in the underpass, so that our students and the public can walk under Grove Avenue comfortably. And I think we have a graphic, is it up there? Yeah, there we go, just a graphic of what the underpass might look like, that would be on our campus looking east, so that the Miller Creek would flow on the far-left side, and you'd have walking access underneath as well, so we could, and when you cross there, you go directly across Lincoln Street, and then access onto the APS property, which would, again, allow us to expand and connect our campus, that's very important, and I want to thank the city for being willing to do that, and hopefully in 2020, we can get that done, as part of your partnership. All of this really would have, is made possible by the partnership that Michael described so well. APS has been terrific, Mackenzie Rogers is here to accommodate our timeline, and needs the city, you have all been very helpful in this process, the Shumways have been great to work with, the city, and it came together because everybody was willing to give and take, and make the timing worked out. Sometimes these partnerships work, Mayor, and this one is coming together well, so we just have to bring it to a conclusion, and anything we can do to help make that happen, we're pleased to do. So, thank you.
Thank you, President Flicker. Mackenzie Rogers, would you want to speak with APS? Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, esteemed council, I'm Mackenzie Rogers, Northwest Division Manager for APS. I just want to speak on behalf of APS and the partnership that has been described here for this whole area. In addition to selling our old service center to Prescott College, as President Flicker just discussed, APS will be relocating our existing distribution substation to the adjacent lot. So we're really excited to be a part of this project and the revitalization in the area by improving the new increased-capacity substation to serve the increased demand in the area. So the current substation shown here in the upper corner, kind of looks like an erector set, it was built in 1957, and currently serves downtown Prescott, as well as a large portion of northern Prescott. So not only will this new, modern substation have increased capacity, but it'll be a much lower profile, as you can see in both the Shumways rendition, and then also in this picture here, it'll be a much lower-profile substation, so it'll make it much less noticeable, and support the improvements in the area as well. There'll be a 10-foot block wall, as you can see, that'll enclose the entire substation area for security purposes, but we're doing everything we can to make it match the rest of the area, and working with each of the partners to do that as well. We have a long history with this land particularly, and the city, and we're really excited to see this area developed in this way, and we're excited to be part of it, so thank you for the opportunity.
Great, thank you, Mackenzie. Anybody else on the presentation side?
I don't believe so, Mayor, and just in closing, I'd like to thank everybody involved in this, that, as you can see, there was a lot of moving parts, and a lot of people with diverse interests, but everybody's interest was what was in the best interest of the Prescott community, and I think this project demonstrates that.
Very good, any other questions, comments from the council at this point? I'm assuming we might have a few public comments? So let me just say, before we get started there, Maureen, if you would like to speak, we do have cards there on the table, you do get three minutes, and, you know, just make sure that you're addressing the council. We don't answer questions at this time, but we would direct you to staff or others if you do have questions after the meeting, so, yes.
Mayor, we currently have seven, eight speaker cards, and the first one is David Parker.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, thank you for having me. My name is David Parker, I'm the owner/broker of Goliath Commercial Real Estate here in Prescott. The reason I came here today has to do with the valuation. Let's just take for an example that in the years 2000, I used to do broker price opinions or evaluations for banks throughout the United States, I used to do 20 to 30 evaluations a month. In addition to that, I have also been called as an expert witness to evaluate land in Prescott Valley. One of my most recent accomplishments was selling the land that now houses the Lowe's Department Store out on Highway 69. That particular project took me three and a half years from start to finish, so I have a little bit of staying power with me to try and accomplish what I've started. So let me just take something, Bill, I wonder if you could help me on this, here we have a situation where we're in a subdivision, you live in a 6,500-square-foot, six-bedroom, four-and-a-half-bath house. Recently, in your subdivision, there has been a couple of sales, the first one was a 1,000-square-foot house, two-bedroom, one-bath, sold for $200,000, or $200 a square foot. The next one that sold was 3,000 square feet, and had three bedrooms, two baths, two-car garage, sold for $650,000, or $217 a square foot. The last one that sold was 5,000 square feet, four bedrooms, three-and-a-half baths, sold for $1,150,000, or $230 a square foot. I have a gentleman that would like to buy your 6,500-square-foot house, he will close in 90 days, all cash, he would like to offer you $750,000. Would you take that deal?
You know what, I'm not going to answer that question, I don't have the details here.
That's okay, I know, I tried to get, to be able to put this on the screen, but I was object, so what the meaning of it here is, somebody is offering $750,000, or $115 a square foot for a house, that is actually worth $215 a square foot, so the value is almost twice as what the person was willing to ask. So why do I say that? Well, let's look at the project at hand, it's a wonderful project, I have no objection to it, I'm all for bringing in economic growth and these types of projects to the city of Prescott. Look at the northwest corner of North Monizuma and Willis. Recently, there was a sale that took place that encompassed .35 acres, that property sold for $420,000. That equates to $1,200,000 per acre. Just adjacent to that, at 214 North Monizuma, there was a property that sold, that was .09 acres, sold for $75,000, that equates-
Mr. Parker, if you could wrap up, that'd be great.
I'm trying to.
Okay, your three minutes is up.
Okay, so that property sold for $833,000 an acre. 519 Miller Valley, just south of the McDonald's hamburger, 4.91 acres, sold for $570,000 an acre. 223 Whipple, which is just north-
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Okay, one more, so-
No, you're, thank you very much.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, the value of the land that you're offering for sale at $300,000 is probably one-four, or one-fifth the value, the true value of what that land should be, and I don't think-
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Daniel Madsen?
Good afternoon, I've already been mentioned a couple of times, so, let me, real quickly, because I want to use my three-minute act, when they do their renderings, I notice you can't see the monument. I hear a lot of questions from people, and a lot of complaints from people, as you all know, I actually have a lot of people who would like me to run for council, so I hear a lot of comments, and when I've told them that the monument will not be affected, that eases a lot of people's minds, so I would suggest that it be included in future renderings, so that we can use that as the ability to locate where that is relative to the project, that would probably help ease people's minds. I also noticed the creek isn't shown, it might be easier for people to relate everything if you can see where the creek runs through it. And I noticed, early on, when they showed where the pool is and all that, I noticed that that's some of the last of our affordable housing in town, is what would be taken out for that. When he says a row would be included, I am looking forward to seeing how they manage to implement that. As far as, I do believe that we will have a very nice park built over there, if we can actually implement the plan. The one thing that I was expecting was that something would be said about the timing of the project, when the park we're using now would no longer be available. I would like to know that, so if somebody can address that, that would be nice. Some people have suggested that we'd be able to use it again this summer, the other park probably won't be ready until at least midsummer, so it'd be nice to hear about that. But as Joe and I discussed yesterday, I think we can make a very nice space over there, and I think it would be a good extension of Granite Creek Park, so I'm hopeful that this will come out well. I do have to tell you, I hear a lot of people complaining about the way this was originally presented, and hopefully transparency can be increased to the point where people will be less suspicious of it, shall we say. So I think it's going to be a good thing if the implementation comes out appropriately. When they show their rendition of the park area next to the hotel, I think a little bit more natural would probably make more people happier, because what they show is a little bit too big-city. So, anyway, we all love that Granite Creek area, so let's kind of keep it a little bit more in character, I hope.
Thanks, Daniel.
Kathleen Yetman?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, my name is Kathleen Yetman, I'm the executive director of the Prescott Farmers Market, and I've been working with Joe Baines, and looking at what this could mean for the Prescott Farmers Market to be located in the Granite Creek Park. We're really excited at that possibility, to be near Greenways, in a walkable area. As you said, our farmers market is growing, and this could be a really great partnership for us, to be in the downtown area, next to businesses, walkable area, I think it's going to be a great partnership. I do want to speak on behalf of my three-year-old, who is really excited about the splash pad, so, thank you for considering families, that's another thing that I think we really need in our community, so thank you for bringing that up, I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
Connie Can Tell Me?
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, I hope you're all doing well today, this is good news. My name is Connie Can Tell Me, I'm a Prescott downtown resident and business owner. I'm here today to voice my support for the Hilton Hotel Project. As some of you may know, I've been, for many years, advocating for the preservation and enhancement of this beautiful city we all call home. I have witnessed the decay and neglect of our city for many, many years now, fortunately, that is turning around. Just recently, I'm encouraged and hopeful that we have people in place that both see the value of what we have here, and the vision to move us forward into preservation, renovation, prosperity, and economic growth. This hotel, as seen by myself and many of the downtown residents and business owners, represents more than just extra accommodation for our burgeoning tourism industry. This hotel represents a vote of confidence by the investors and owners who have chosen this location for this project. It is a vote of confidence in the city management, and a message that we are finally on the right track, no longer a tattered little town in the high desert of Arizona. We are now on the map, as they say. We have seen an explosion of people coming to Prescott to contribute to her well-being, not to tract. This is a new day for Prescott, this is a step in the right direction. We must continue to get ahead of the inevitable growth, be proactive, not reactive. Change is difficult for many, but we must understand that we cannot stop people from coming here, we must manage the growth and the direction our city is taking. That area of the city, which this hotel is proposed in, is in dire need of gentrification and cleaning up, and I think we've all been in the area, and sometimes we don't go after dark, in fact, all the time. It's a perfect area in which to extend the downtown, it's within walking distance from the courthouse, it will open a whole new corridor to be planned and envisioned respectfully for the betterment of Prescott. It will provide additional places for the people that will eventually live, work, and play in this beautiful community. It will be a gateway for other people to come and invest their hard-earned money into our future. The naysayers will come, but keep your eye on the ball, this is about what's good for Prescott as a whole, not the emotional outcry from a few people who don't like change. Change is always difficult. Keep up the good work, and thank you for letting me express a sometimes overlooked view, the ability to see the bigger picture, and adapt for the future. I thank you again for your courage and the vision to move us forward, I hope you encourage and promote this project, keep your head up and move forward. Thanks again.
Thank you, Connie.
Cecilia Jernigan?
Hello, Mayor, Protam, Billy, and City Council, thank you so much for giving me this three minutes to talk, and if anybody knows me, I've never said anything in three minutes, so I'm going to try. I think it's wonderful that we're all talking about the future, because we have to have a vision for the future, but I want to take you back 23 years ago, when I was the Director of Sales and Marketing at the Haciampa Inn. That hotel was built in 1927, and is historical and still beautiful today. But I can tell you, during June, July, and August, we had pretty good business. I worked in the valley for 10 years as the Director of Sales and Marketing for large hotels, 300 rooms, 1,000 square feet, I mean, 1,000 people for attendees. I worked with McFinnick, McFinnick was the Food and Beverage Director, I was the Director of Sales and Marketing. We had the accounts like Motorola, Intel, Honeywell. When I came here to Prescott, I was able to bring all those accounts to the Haciampa. During that time, we were really busy during June, July, and August, that was it. Come October, November, December, January, Mr. Lamerson, you might remember, we almost had to shut down the Haciampa and the Peacock Dining Room, we didn't have any business, we couldn't pay the bills, we had to lay off the staff. So I called on a friend of mine by the name of Sherri Henry. Sherri just retired as the Director of the Arizona Office of Tourism. Director of the Arizona Office of Tourism. Sherri came up here and sat down with all of us downtown, the Gurley Street Grill, Murphy's, Kendall, Kathy Murphy, and we said, what can we do? What can we do to reinvent Prescott? How can we save our little community? And you know what we did? We worked together. We got the city, we got the chamber, we got the restaurants, we got the hotels, we got everybody working together. And look at what we've done in the last 23 years. Look at our occupancy now. What's the bid tax bringing in last year? You know, Michael?
A million.
Close to $1 million. Close to $1 million. But we can't sit back. We have to go forward. We have to look at the future. I was fortunate, when they sold the Haciampa, Bill and Georgia Tyke, that I was hired by the largest private hotel company in the world. I flew for 10 years around the company, opening up new hotels. I was lucky that I could still live here in Prescott, as I flew around the country. But I can tell you, what we have today, by what these folks are doing, is giving us a gift. This is a gift to our community. And I can tell you, the communities that I went into, I worked with the cities, I worked with the chambers, and those that were visionary, that looked at 20 or 25 years down the road, those are the ones that succeeded. So I would say to these folks, and especially with John at Prescott College, I've heard him talk about this vision, about this corridor, and we've got it. We've got this gift right now. So please take it. And thank you for everything that you're all doing, and everybody's hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Cecilia.
Howard Mechanic?
Council and Mayor Howard Mechanic, Prescott. This is a great project, no question about it. There are some details that need to be worked out. But there's one thing in the way. That's the Arizona Constitution. The Arizona Constitution prohibits public gifts to private companies or individuals. We had a couple of people talking about how this is a gift. You are correct. This is a gift to WSH Corporation. Now, the public may wonder why we have a prime two-acre parcel, the best parcel in all of Prescott, best vacant parcel, and no one else is interested? We had an auction, we had a bidding process, and nobody was interested? Do you understand that that was a sham bidding process? If you were a developer of hotels from Phoenix, you were not allowed to participate? If you wanted to be involved late in the game, after all the, this was a done deal, in November, this so-called bid was put out. In August, before November, you approved a contract with WSH. Then you go to bid after the contract is issued? That sounds strange. Well, the notice of publication by the city said, well, that contract didn't appear to be conforming with state and local law. So we have to have a bidding process. So let's call it a bidding process. Let's have a sham bid. And let's pretend the property's only worth $300,000 because nobody else is bidding. This is a great project, but you're blowing it. You made a mistake in August, and then you tried to fix it in November with a sham bidding process, and then you come back to the public and say, nobody else wants this valuable property? You're a responsible organization. You need to get the best return for the public on this property. That's under the Arizona Constitution. You need to have an open process to try to encourage competition for city properties. It doesn't matter if there's economic development involved. You can't explain it out, oh, we're going to give this gift and we're going to get something back. No, you can't give that gift. And the value of the property isn't the only part of the gift. There are other gifts. The city's going to spend 33% of the cost to rebuild this bridge, but can only use it for six days out of the year. The other 300, over 350 days a year, the private company can use it, and they're only investing 63, 66%. I could go on and on and on about the gifts that are in this contract, not just the property, but the promises the city is going to give for use of this so-called parkland. They're allowed to encroach on the parkland, they're allowed-
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mechanic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Hoy?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm not coming up here to denigrate the project by any means. I think that downtown redevelopment is excellent, and there's a lot of really good things about this project. I am concerned about the water use, and Councilman Good voiced most of my concerns, so I don't want to review those. But there's just one thing in here that really bothers me. And it's on, I think it's page 34 of the Development Agreement, or the packet, page 96, where it says, "The city is responsible for the costs of irrigating and maintaining the park area, consistent with the design intent of the approved plans and a Class A development." I don't know what a Class A development is. I hope somebody knows what it is, because undefined things in contracts can come back to bite you. But the most concerning thing is, no water demand analysis is required for the project, and the project is not subject to further review and approval for a water management policy. I just don't understand why that would be in any contract that we would ever approve in the city of Prescott, when water is so precious to us. Why would we ever say that we can't look at the water closely? And it just can't help but make you suspicious. What has, what has somebody got in mind that they would need to put that statement in the contract? Thank you. So I hope maybe it'll go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Kristi Everson?
Good afternoon. I'm Kristi Everson. I'm the Chair of the Granite Creek Corridor Revitalization Committee. And I wanted to say that I'm absolutely in support of this, having seen some of the plans and some of the designs in progress. I'm perfectly comfortable that the riparian habitat will be protected. We can come up with wonderful solutions for the water usage, for the splash pad, and making sure it's all-inclusive of our overall plan. I'm just, I'm very confident this is going to be fabulous for the community. That's it.
Thank you, Kristi.
Ellen Montgomery?
Hi. I wasn't expecting to get up in front of everybody. I came late to the party. I'm just curious what's actually happening to the Tom Petty Park, that little pocket park there, because it really wasn't clear in the pictures. So that's actually a question I need to ask somebody.
Yeah, you could ask Joe after the meeting. That'd be great.
Joe. Is that you? Okay.
Thank you.
Ralph Hess?
Good afternoon. I have a couple of concerns that really arise out of the comments that have been made by many of the people today. And that, the first of one is related to what Mr. Lamar indicated with regard to acknowledging the lack of transparency with regard to this process. One of the things that comes out of the fact that there has been, I think, absent, completely absent of any public participation or discussion with regard to this project until the deal was already done. All of the people who have spoken today, either in favor of the project or in opposition to the project, indicate, from what I can see, is a lack of discussion regarding alternatives. The benefit that I see coming out of this project for the city, aside from the economic benefits that might be there, is the improvement of the park. That park is in horrible shape. And it's been in horrible shape for quite some time. But that's because we haven't done anything to improve that park. That park's a fantastic piece of property. And I can see that this project, the partnership that you're promoting, is going to improve that. But what was, what's lacking as a result of the lack of transparency is, what alternatives do we have to selling public land to improving that park? We could put, we could put public monies into that park and clean that thing up, and make it look like it's been rendered on these design slides that we were shown today, if we put public money into it. And from the comments, the comments that I heard back in August, as well as some of them today, is that there are those among us who believe that public land should stay public. Public land doesn't need to be transmitted to private land. We don't know an alternative as to whether the Hilton folks would be happy to put that project up by buying up the Sam Hill property and whatever other private property they're buying, and having the city keep the public land that it's proposing to lease and sell to Hilton in order for this project, in exchange for improving the park, which we have the power to do on our own. We could, we could keep the public land, and we could improve the public land if we have the public will to do so. And the elected officials have the will to put the monies toward improving that land. So if there'd been more public involvement in this and more transparency, I believe we would probably know of other alternatives to what has been shown to us after the deal has been done.
Thank you.
Brad Casada?
Mayor, Mayor Pro-Tam, Council. Thanks a lot for allowing me to be here. I've spoken to Shane Shumway, I believe, on the phone a couple of weeks ago. Myself and my business partner, Jesse Burke, are the gentlemen that are behind Founding Fathers, the project on Granite Street, 218 North Granite Street, which is the west side. We're in full support. I grew up here, and Jesse was born and raised here. And there, as far as it goes with me and transparency, what I've seen moving back here and dealing with just our project and seeing what is going on in that area, anytime I've had a question, I've found that you guys have all gone out of your way to explain exactly, you know, what might be happening, or how best I can help facilitate our project and how it's, it's going to be moving forward with. I feel like a lot of times transparency can be found if people just simply ask. And a lot of public doesn't realize that that's always an option for us as the citizens of the city or any other city. So I appreciate the ability that you guys have given me and Jesse to, to just come before you guys and talk at any given matter with, with questions we have. Second, at the end of the day, you can't, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. And what I'm, what I'm getting at is, we have that property down there, and of course, the city might be able to dump money into it, and maybe people can come. But there's no guarantee of that. Really, at the end of the day, you do need, at some level, private individuals, private companies or corporations, or individuals like Jesse and I, who have the vision and the partnerships within the community or other businesses, to come in, ask for help, or be able to put money down in order to develop an area. So I don't know all the backdoor dealings that some of these individuals brought up. It sounds like some good questions. I'm sure they'll be answered. But I do know that the ability for the Shumways, Jesse, myself, and any other individuals that are moving and doing stuff in that area, at the end of the day, comes down to a lot of hard work and vision, that we have had a lot of sweat. And, well, I cut myself the other day there, so blood now. And, and with that, obviously, that gives us the ability to create a place that the public can come and enjoy, and actually create a place of commerce in that area that otherwise would not have existed. So I appreciate the time to talk, and thank you for everybody else that got up here and spoke.
Thank you, Jesse.
I don't have any more.
Okay. I think that concludes that item on the agenda. So we'll move on to item 3C.
Presentation by Public Works of the City's 2018 Water Smart Drop-by-Drop Public Education Program Effectiveness and Calendar Year 2019 Program.
Good afternoon. I'll do a quick switch on the PowerPoint here. Good afternoon, Leslie. Good afternoon. Should I hold for just a minute? You're missing a few-
No, 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 go right ahead.
Proceed. Okay.
We're good.
Thank you. It was like swimming upstream, a little salmon.
Don't take that personally, Leslie.
Proceed?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. So, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm Leslie Grazer. I'm providing, this is one of our fun projects for our area, which is Water Smart Drop-by-Drop. This was, we were encouraged to give this presentation about what's been happening with this program, even from the get-go, because there were folks that thought it was pretty exciting. So I'll move through this fairly quickly. We weren't planning on anything more than 15 minutes. So Water Smart Drop-by-Drop was envisioned to be a three-to-five-year program. We always build our programs so that they have some staying power and that they become recognizable for the community, and they can be modified along the way as needed. Some of the updates for the program included the new logo. So you probably remember an older logo that said "Water Smart" in a horizontal fashion. And along with that, it's not just a logo, it's putting the time into having fact sheets and monthly presentations at the library, things of that nature. So we can move along here. Today, I'll just go through fairly quickly the purpose of the program, how we developed it, the delivery of it, the effectiveness of it. That's always important, too, to see if you're spending your money wisely, and what's happening with the program. And then, looking into 2019, that program is ready to go, as well, as I said. A three-to-five-year program is generally best. So the program development, actually, let me just step back one, if you don't mind. The purpose is really important, because the city had understood for several years that we had a community that was very interested in water. And they've always been interested in water. So if you look back in time through newspaper articles, it's always kind of the talk of the town to some extent. So we were monitoring that and seeing as the, you know, we had an economic downturn and things were coming back, you know, what, what can we provide to the community on that? We also knew that there were, there's ongoing decisions to be made. And so when you have an informed community, it helps in decision-making. I had one former mayor say to me once, he said, "Leslie, when are we going to solve this water thing?" And I had to honestly look at him and say, you know what, it seems like every generation works on water supplies. It doesn't matter where you're at. You could be on another continent, and everybody's, continues each generation works on water supplies. So the development of this was, basically, it's 11 topics that were presented this year. Since we just opened the program this first year in 2018, we needed to kind of introduce it and explain what we were doing to folks. So that kind of cut out one of our topics for the first go-around. What was recognized that we didn't have, and there was great interest, was a rainwater harvesting program. Since we already had this built and on the streets, and the, you know, everything was out-published, what we did was, we were able to work with the library again. And I'll pause just for a moment. We have such a wonderful library here. And we sat down with them. They had opportunity for us to come- They had opportunity for us to come in and do a one-and-a-half-hour rainwater harvesting workshop in April, and that was very well-attended. So this is 2018. That's now past. The delivery of this, so we worked quite intensively with Community Outreach Manager, so that's Sean Heine. And we made sure we were tagging into Facebook, press releases, everything that we could that was, it's not a cost to the city necessarily. We don't have to make a lot of payments to, or have a lot of funding to do this. And so when you start a program, you try to start kind of small and meager and see what you can do with a limited budget. And I think we were able to produce fairly well. We also, once again, tied in with the library. The library has just a machine for marketing, and you see that in this community. So Martha Baden and others were wonderful to work with and told us their timetables and expectations and requirements so we could feed information in as well. Radio announcements were available, the monthly presentation itself, fact sheets, so something the public could walk away with. But it was also important that we had, because water has so many topics, that we had fact sheets that were just two sides that somebody could walk away with and explore more if they'd like on their own, or go to the city's website and look into different aspects of Take-home items, this was interesting. There had been pretty much like a stockpiling because previous practices had been, you save money by buying in bulk. So there was nothing wrong with that at the time, but when I came onboard, there were stockpiles of things. And so we were pretty lucky that we had quite a bit of things that we could provide at no cost. So once again, to us, to buy new things for this program, we were able to keep the cost down quite a bit. And the information's accessible on the city's website. That was important, too. We firmly believed we could not stockpile things anymore, and so we made sure that our things were available electronically. Okay. Program delivery. So Leah Hubbard is a part of my group. There's two of us. She's the Water Resource Coordinator. And it's a little bit unfair because this was our first launch, our first presentation, but I brought this in.
......................................................................................................
Okay. So I just wanted to give you kind of a live feel of what we had at the library. And Leah's been with the city about a year and a half now, and she's a strong, she came in as a strong employee, and she ran with this program and has delivered quite a few of the topics. When we got into those more detailed topics, I, we would switch out. It's also important that we could see the value of working with our colleagues. This is Matt Colleen, and so our watershed topic, he came in and provided information to the community and was able to answer questions of more detail than we might have been able to ourselves. You'll see here, I'm sorry, these are so dark. This is Denise Moore, the Utility Manager, the Billing Manager. And so she came in also with Mark Woodfill, and we had a topic on understanding your water bill, because sometimes to get at those conservation ideas, you have to understand where you're at first and then where you'd like to go to. And so this worked out really nicely, and we really appreciate the help from that area as well. So we just kept calling on all of our friends in the city and saying, "We know you're the subject expert. Do you have a little bit of time to come in?" This is, excuse me, this is Barnabas Kane, and this was the weekend event. It was a one-and-a-half-hour rainwater harvesting that we added in later, after the program was built, and that had very high attendance. And that's also telling to us that maybe we need to move towards a weekend event, a weekend presentation, so we can build that for year three. And then this last one is, the Arizona Department of Water Resources came up, kind of pull it all together at the end. So the program was supposed to build. There are so many different topics on water, and so you start kind of with the basic building blocks, and then you move into those bigger, heavier topics. But our public was really a lot of fun to spend time with. They asked good questions, and, you know, they came in strong, you know, first day. They were like, "Let me ask you about Big Chino." And I said, "You know what? We have a topic on that. We'll be able to get that towards the end, but let's first talk about how we move water around the city. Let's get your basic building blocks known." So program tracking. We, Leah Hubbard takes care of this, and it's in cooperation with, of course, John Heine, because he's tracking hits and things of that nature. But what we learned was that, at the library, our average attendance at this monthly, on Wednesday, at lunchtime event, was 35 people, was the average. Excuse me. I don't mean to run out of voice here. We were a little bit concerned about that, but the library came back to us and said, "You know what? For a Wednesday program at noon, that is great attendance." They said, "You would take that as a good sign." And I said, "Okay. Thank you." We didn't know. How do we compare with other programs they have? The website hits, so we have preskettwater.com, and that takes folks right to the city's website, to the conservation webpage. So we tracked, on average, the hits during this time period. The Facebook hits were high, of course. And then Water Smart Landscaping is an outdoor web-based program that we have for the community. And this has fairly high number here. We're, to be honest, because we always like to be very straightforward, is that we're not sure about that, those hits. That seems very high to us. So we've talked to the company that runs that, has the bones of that, that was on our website to see if we have anything. But we wanted to try to find you measures that you could relate to with what we have. So, of course, we wanted to see how this affected or drove the water rebate program, because there's always interest in, you know, do we have, why are people maybe not filing a rebate? So we've seen, on average, you know, the monthly average was about 11 during this program, and then you can see the savings listed here. So that makes us to 2019, because I promised this would be short. Oh, I should back up one, if you don't mind. So it's important to know, you know, what did you spend on this program? So part of the program, we needed to have fairly strong support from a marketing firm. So we used your project MO. It's one of our on-call contracts. And the, the, basically, our set limit was $5,000. That's what we'd put in the budget for fiscal year 19, and we, it looks like we spent out $4,700. So that, excuse me, that included, you know, not just a logo, but all the banners that we needed to have in a certain electronic format to use at the library, the fact sheets, the printing of the fact sheets. Let me think about what else we had. I'm probably missing something. Leah's going to say, "And you forgot." But they packaged it all together, and they also kept us on a time, timeline, because we can get pulled off so easily on other projects. But to run a successful education program for the community, you have to hit those targets and have things ready at a certain time. So they have been wonderful to work with. They also helped us out just on the fly as well. So when we needed something in a magazine, the home building, Yabai Contractors Association, their Home and Garden Show, we had a very clean article that went in in conjunction with a water savings article they had in there. So they helped us, as I said, on the fly and produced a full-page ad, and that's part of the cost that you see there. Otherwise, supplies was about $800, so pretty nominal. Some of that we had to buy as first-time things that we won't need in future years. We had, as I said, a stockpile of opportunities of aerators, toilet tablets to check if your toilet's leaking, all these different things we could provide to the community during these monthly events. So overall, about $5,500. Looking into 2019, we do expect that number to go down a little bit because now we've gotten good at the marketing, and so we don't need the firm to actually help us prepare our Facebook posts, prepare radio, prepare all these different things. We got it. We learned this first year, and now we can handle it ourselves. So that'll reduce costs. The schedule, we do run some of the same topics, and if I can borrow a line from Councilman Good, he called it, towards the end of the year, the 12-step program. And so we do have a, and it's important that we maintain some of those topics because you need to know how your water moves throughout the community. So it's not like we're up there being robots and presenting the exact same thing. We can expand a little bit more, hit some of the current topics that people are interested in. We did move out the utility billing item and replaced it with the rainwater harvesting, so we could get that in there. And then the other new topic that we added in this year was recharge and recovery, because that has always been a question. It seems very nebulous to folks of, "Why do we do that? And where does it happen? And how long does it take for the water to move, you know, towards the aquifer?" So we'll be able to handle that. These, that's really the end of my show there. See if I can make this work. So this schedule is on the city's website already, so you need to go to Water and Sewer, and there's a Conservation tab. And once you get there, there's Drop-by-Drop, so the exact same thing you just saw on the screen is available here. It's also available on the back table. So thank you for supporting the program for this first year and second year, and then we'll just, of course, modify along the way as we need to hit topics. Thanks again.
Thank you, Leslie. Any questions or comments for Leslie?
I do have a question. So Leslie, are these videotaped? Are they archived somewhere? The presentations that you did last year?
No, they're not. And so that was a really good point. That was one of, when we were working with different folks, including John Heine. He said, "You think we could get some video of that?" And I said, "You know, we probably could, but we didn't really have funding, and we didn't really have the know-how, and we just didn't have the manpower to, to try to pull that all together." But I think that if that's of interest, we'd be more than happy to. Or, I can't remember the morning show. I'm sorry, John's not here. I was going to have him help me out. But he had said, what, I'm just not sure what the Prescott Show is called, but he's like, "What if you came on and provided the same content but had it available for..."
It just seems like, and we're talking a lot about water education lately, and what we're going to do this year, and I just wondered if we could, some way or another, work some of this all together.
Right. Well, I think Mayor Pro Tem, Prescott Media Center, you know, could be a player to help make this, facilitate this where more people could have access, you know, because 35 people's great, but if you could get hundreds watching this via the Prescott Media Center, I'm looking at Councilman Sishka, because he works with those guys a lot. That could be another option to explore this year, just so that we can get that message out.
Absolutely. We just really wanted to run a clean program that didn't have any breaks, that, you know, we didn't miss a beat if one of us had to step out on another project or something. So we learned a lot, and now we can build a little bit more, and we can definitely budget that in this coming fiscal year.
We need to get together, Leslie.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Well, certainly, water conservation is important to the city. It's important to our citizens, and I think people want to be educated about water. They want to know how it works. It's, it's, can be complex, and so I appreciate your efforts to educate the public. It's very, very important, and not just for conservation, but just so they have a better working knowledge of how, how this all works together. So thank you for your efforts.
Mayor, I do have one speaker card.
Oh, yes.
Leslie Hoy.
Good afternoon again. I'm not speaking for the Citizens Water Advocacy Group because the board hasn't approved that, but, but I just want to tell you from our point of view, first of all, to thank the council for sponsoring this program, and to thank Leslie and Leah for all the hard work that it really took to, to present something every single month. And we did have a lot of our members attend. We have a lot of new members, and I know there's so many new people in town, and people are interested in learning more about water. And so it was really important for people to be able to go and, and get some good information. And I think another really big benefit was for the ability of some people who wanted to hang around and ask questions of the staff, get to meet the staff, have some good interactions, because most citizens never have any opportunity to meet the staff. So it put a really good face on the city of Prescott, I think. And so anybody who's out there watching this on TV, come on the third Wednesday of the month to the Prescott Public Library from noon to 1:00 and learn about water. It's a really great opportunity, and I think people will be surprised and really enjoy the experience. So thanks.
So Leslie.
Yes.
Would it be valuable to your group to have this archived, have the videos archived?
Oh, yes. I did mean to come up here and say, yes, do the videos, because we video all of our programs, and they, you can look and see how many hits they've had. It's not, you know, thousands of hits, but, but I think it is really, it's really useful. And probably the city has to be a little bit more formal about it than we are, but I do think it is very useful.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other public comment? Okay. I think that got us through the agenda today. This meeting is adjourned.